I would now call the district meeting of the planning commissions to order. I will call on Commissioner Edwards for the invocation.
Let us pray. O wise and most gracious Father, Lord, we thank you that you control all things, even time, and we thank you, Lord, that we stop all that we're doing during this time of year. God, we know that when you came into the world, you split time, and we judge all things before you came and after you came. For, Lord, you came in the fullness of time when we was without strength. Lord, we just ask right now that you will bless us in this moment. We thank you, God, that you called all of us to be in Suffolk at such a time as this, and you ask, Lord God, that you give us the wisdom and the knowledge to make wise decisions. Open our hearts, open our ears, and, Lord God, let us think like you and speak like you. God, we thank you for our staff, who has put a lot of their time and effort into putting together these presentations, God, and we thank you, Lord, for the citizens who've taken time out of their busy schedules to be here and let their voice be heard. God, we just ask that in this conversation that we will be peacefully among each other, and we ask, God, that you will bless us into this new year. We ask all these things in your precious and righteous name, and we do pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Wyman, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Bauer. Commissioner Creekmore?
Here.
Commissioner Eberwin?
Here.
Commissioner Edwards?
Commissioner Goodman?
Here.
Commissioner Hicks?
Here.
Vice Chairman Staler?
Here.
And Chairman Singleton?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wyman. Are there any corrections to the November meeting? The minutes? If not, they will stand as printed. This afternoon, before we start our public hearings, there's two items that would like for us to address. I would like to combine items A and B. Can I get a motion for that?
I'll move.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of a voice vote? Objections? And the other items is item D and E, with item E replacing D and D replacing E. E should come first. I'd like to combine those also for one public hearing.
So move.
Okay. Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no opposed? Okay. This afternoon, we have, one, two, three, one, two, three, four, five. We have six public hearings. Public hearings are for 30 minutes, 10 minutes for the proponents, 15 minutes for the opponents, and five minutes for rebuttal. This meeting is videotaped and televised for public viewing. The first item on our agenda today will be item A, rezoning request, RZN 2024-00008, SYAA soccer facility. And the other item of this combined will be conditional use permit request, CUP 2024-00020, SYAA soccer facility. Mr. Wyman, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Rezoning request, RZN 2024-008, SYAA soccer facility submitted by Jeffrey Payne, SYAA treasurer applicant on behalf of Suffolk Youth Athletic Association property owner in accordance with Sections 31304 and 31305 of the Unified Development Ordinance to rezone and amend the official zoning map of the city of Suffolk in order to change the zoning from RR Rural Residential Zoning District to B2 General Commercial Zoning District for property located at 432 Kings Fork Road, zoning map 25 parcel 13. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Chuckatack Voting Borough, zoned RR Rural Residential Zoning District and SCOD Special Corridor Overlay District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Central Growth Area Suburban Use District. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to rezoning request, RZN 2024-008. Additionally, in his presentation, Matthew Madariaga will cover conditional use permit request, CUP 2024-020, SYAA soccer facility, also submitted by Jeffrey Payne, SYAA treasurer applicant on behalf of Suffolk Youth Athletic Association property owner in accordance with Sections 31306 and 31406 of the Unified Development Ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish an amusement, entertainment, recreation center indoor use on property located at 432 Kings Fork Road, zoning map 25 parcel 13. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Chuckatack Voting Borough zoned RR Rural Residential District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Central Growth Area Suburban Use District. With that being said, Matthew Madariaga, staff planner, will present our report on these items.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. The application before you today is a request to rezone and amend the official zoning map of the city of Suffolk in order to change the zoning from RR Rural Residential Zoning District to B2 Conditional General Commercial Zoning District on a portion of property located at 432 Kings Fork Road. A conditional use permit, CUP 2024-020, was submitted concurrently with this request proposing to expand the existing use of the property by establishing an amusement/entertainment/ recreation center indoor use in the southeasternmost portion of the subject property. The rezoning must be approved in order for the proposed use to be allowed. The property in question is designated by the 2035 Comprehensive Plan as being within the suburban use district of the Central Growth Area and is also part of the SCOD Special Corridor Overlay District. The subject parcel is located at 432 Kings Fork Road. The portion of property to be rezoned and subject to the proposed CUP is 2.6 acres in size. To the north of the property, forested lands zoned RR Rural Residential Zoning District. To the south, there are single-family detached homes, a Dominion Energy Substation, and more athletic fields owned by Suffolk Youth Athletic Association, SYAA. All are zoned RR. To the east are single-family detached homes and forested lands zoned RR, and to the west are more single-family detached homes, also zoned RR. Before we use the rezoning exhibit, which outlines the boundaries of the portion of the parcel to be rezoned from RR to B2 Conditional for the purpose of expanding the existing use of outdoor soccer fields to include an area with an indoor sports facility. The proffer provided relates to the allowed uses on the portion of property proposed to be rezoned to B2. The applicant has proffered out all uses except for the amusement, entertainment/recreation center indoor use that is being proposed. As it relates to the CUP, this is the exhibit before you on the screen. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to establish an amusement, entertainment/recreation center indoor use in an existing building on the property. The existing building was approved as a storage facility. The applicant is proposing to use the building to provide indoor sports such as soccer and field hockey, as well as having fitness training and associated meetings. The plan includes an open playing area as well as a section for spectators with bleachers. The applicant has stated that the building will primarily be used outside of the peak times for the rest of the property. The UDO calls for a minimum of 1.5 parking spaces per 1,000 square feet of indoor recreation use. The building is approximately 7,700 square feet, meaning that 12 parking spaces would be required. The existing parking more than provides enough spaces for this use. In summary, it is important to note that the proposed rezoning of a portion of the property located at 432 Kings Fork Road is within the suburban use district of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Policy 2-1 stipulates that development be kept focused in designated growth areas in the city. The subject property is located within the Central Growth Area, which conforms with this policy. Section 31-408 of the UDO states that B2 zones shall be along arterial roadways. Kings Fork Road is designated as a minor arterial roadway as well as SCOD. Therefore, staff recommends approval of rezoning request, RZN 2024-008, conditional with the proffers as submitted. Additionally, staff finds that this conditional use permit request meets the criteria set forth in Sections 31-306 and 31-406 of the UDO. Therefore, staff recommends approval of CUP 2024-020 with conditions. This concludes my presentation, and I will stand by for any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. The first item that we're going to have to deal with this afternoon is going to be the rezoning request, RZN 2024-0008, and I will now open the public hearing. Who would like to speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Harry Cross. I live at 5,000 Waters Avenue, Suffolk, Virginia. This is my 75th year as a Suffolk resident. I had the privilege of being one of the founding members of Suffolk Youth Athletic Association, started in 1981 with the philosophy that we provide kids with a safe place to play with an environment of sportsmanship being emphasized. Today, SYAA owns about 40 acres of land. It has buildings, lighted fields, maintenance equipment, and concession stands. They still maintain the original philosophy of sports for all. Anyone can come and play. They also have a special needs program that they offer to our community. SYAA is a nonprofit 501(c). It is always growing and adding capital improvements, the latest one being the need for this indoor facility. Currently, hundreds of Suffolk young people go to Virginia Beach to play in facilities that they offer. We want to keep them here and provide this for them. So, SYAA's presence is saving the city of Suffolk millions of dollars a year in recreational opportunities. I fully support the rezoning to allow SYAA to serve our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Is there anyone else to speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon. My name is Tamara Bujilowos Flores. I live at 2740 Birch Street in Norfolk, actually. I am the president of Wave Training Football Club. I have over 15 years' experience with training semi-professional, professional athletes. I have been working with SYAA in some capacity over the last 13 to 14 years, and I will say that this is imperative. I have players who play on the junior national team for America. I also have players who play Development Academy with MLS Next, which is the professional youth side, and then I also have players who are training to play on the semi-pro side as well. So I will say this, as a person who is coming from outside and has worked with SYAA, that this facility is absolutely necessary to the community in bridging the gap for those players who want to play on the elite level. It is necessary to play year-round, and having indoor facility to train is completely going to help the constituents in the Suffolk community. Right now, as the last speaker spoke, you are losing children to Virginia Beach right now, and the players who cannot afford or who cannot have, the parents don't have the time to train in Virginia Beach, those players lose out on a lot of great opportunities, whether it's college scholarships, whether it's going into private school scholarships, they're losing out on those opportunities. I'm hoping that SYAA, as we can, as my club continues to have a partnership with them, that we can do whatever is possible to help them continue to grow. But we want to keep the children in the community where SYAA is making it absolutely affordable for them to play, as soccer is a very, very expensive sport in America. So if you guys can take the time and really consider the building usage, I will say that there are similar buildings with the exact same plans in Norfolk right now. It's called Norfolk Indoor Sports Turf. I also have, I also have a connection with them, but there's another building that's similar in Hampton for HR Sportsplex. So there's a lot of buildings that are very similar to this style. The rezoning is only going to help the children in this area. It's going to help the parents and the families, and it's going to keep promoting the growth of not only the sport, but making sure that these children have a home to be a part of, something outside of being in the streets. Thank you for your time and enjoy the rest of your day.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else to speak in favor of this request?
Hello, my name is Reagan Dischroon, and I live at 6653 Quince Road. I'm a soccer mom, a ref mom, and a field hockey mom, and a commissioner at SYAA. My children have been involved at SYAA for a few years now. My son plays soccer, and as I said, my girl's ref. They started reffing when they were 12 years old, which they feel like babies at that point when they're out there. SYAA has provided the type of environment that's nurturing and full of growth and opportunity for the kids. Currently, my daughters are sophomores and seniors in high school and continue to ref. And every week when they have to fill out their request for what field to be placed at to work, and they're certified through the state, and they always put SYAA because of the nurturing environment, the growth, the mentors that come alongside them to teach them, and the indoor facility would provide an opportunity for not only soccer players, but the referees and the field hockey players to grow throughout the year. So I am in full support of the indoor facility. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We have four minutes left. Anyone else?
My name is Karen Arnold. I live at 713 Helen Avenue, Chesapeake, Virginia. I am the senior referee assigner for Tidewater Soccer Referee Association. I personally have been working with SYAA since the year 2000, assigning the referees for their soccer. I deal with all the clubs in Hampton Roads. I assign 90% of the clubs. I do over 10,000 games a year. I see a lot of referee abuse, a lot of issues for these children that are reffing games. I will say SYAA is my main supporter and help when I have issues. If I go to them, we get the problem alleviated. In my opinion, it is the best-run club. They also provide a youth referee program. The referees start there. They come to me. I work with them. We currently have three referees that started with SYAA that represent the state of Virginia reffing. They are phenomenal. Again, it's thanks to SYAA, so I do want to see this go further. Suffolk should be proud of SYAA and supported in meeting in the interests of the youth. I fully support, sorry, I fully support this rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Come on up, young man.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Timothy Kubanek. I reside at 119 Dudley Drive in the city of Suffolk, and I'm here to express my support for the conditional use permit to establish that indoor athletic facility at 432 Kings Fork Road. This project represents a unique opportunity to enhance the quality of service for SYAA, but also the residents of Suffolk. My three children are currently enrolled in SYAA soccer, and for the last 12 years, I've been a coach there as well, so I've seen their development from recreation to competitive soccer, and I've also seen, just as other people have witnessed, a move for folks to shift over to Virginia Beach and other municipalities because of the quality of their facilities and the presence of their facilities is simply not here in the city of Suffolk yet. And I think this body has the opportunity to provide that so that we can keep our kids in town, to develop the skill level of kids in town, and to increase the competitiveness of our teams, while also creating and maintaining that high level of support and growth that we can do in that facility. As an administrator with some public schools and also as an educator of 21 years of experience, I choose to continue my volunteerism in that facility because I believe just that, and I hope that you will support that effort on SYAA to approve that rezoning request. Thank you so much.
Come on up, young lady.
So I could come up here. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I am Sandra Simpson. I reside at, on your map is 25331. That's 525 Kings Fork Road, Suffolk, Virginia. You know, when a new neighbor moves in, you always wonder what it's going to be like. We've been there 50 years, and the new neighbor was SYAA, and it was a vision of two prominent people in Suffolk, and I am very grateful that those two prominent people developed this into a ball field and a soccer field and what else ball it has, and they are good neighbors. I hope you pass this resolution to allow them to turn this into a sportsplex. It's a vision. The vision started with Harry L. Cross and Robert Gillette many years ago, and it is still a vision. Please allow the vision to continue. We've had people to come in, men and women, to work on the vision. We're right next door to the baseball field. There's lots of stories I can tell you, but please allow this to be for the children. You know, there's three sports, three seasons for sports, the summer, spring, and fall. No winter, no winter unless you have something inside, and if they have somewhere to inside, you always hear people talking about, "We need something for the young people. We need something for the young people." So please pass this so that SYAA continues to carry the vision that Harry L. Cross and Robert Gillette started many years ago. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. That completes the time for the proponents. Are there anyone in the audience in opposition to this? Seeing none, hearing none. Mr. Cross, do you have any additional comments you would like to make before I close the public hearing?
You know what to do.
Okay. Okay. I will now close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion?
I'll make a motion for approval of RZN 2024-008.
Second. Just a second. Any discussion on the motion? Call for the vote, Mr. Wyman.
Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Congratulations. We got half the ballot won. The next public hearing is going to be for the conditional use permit request, CUP 2024-00020, SYAA soccer facility. I will now open the public hearing. Are you on, I think we did enough.
No, we already read the caption. This is for the conditional use permit. What you just acted on was the rezoning from RR to B2, but it's important to note, when you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to conditional use permit, CUP 2024-020.
Mr. Cross, don't leave yet. We've got some more to take care of here. We now open the public hearing on the conditional use permit request for this facilities that we now changed the zoning for. Now, now, anyone want to speak in favor of this request?
My name is James Sturgeon. I live at 30075 Maheron Road in Boykins, Virginia. I actually travel to coach and have my kids participate at SYAA in Suffolk, coming into the city. My only other options, if you guys don't approve this, is to take my family to Newport News, Virginia Beach, or Chesapeake to find this kind of facility and this kind of training for our youth. So, don't know what we need to do to move this forward, but this is a facility that is truly needed for year-round sports within the city of Suffolk. I also coach for Suffolk Parks and Rec, an indoor footsle team, and Dominique Cox and I have been working in partnership with SYAA in an attempt to grow an indoor facility and indoor teams to keep kids active throughout the winter. So anything that we need to do to move this forward, that would just be great.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else to speak in favor of this request?
My name's Chris Wally. I am the head men's soccer coach at Chawan University, and I'm also the head coach of Lionsbridge Football Club in Newport News. I was a seven-year resident of Suffolk. I now live in Isle of Wight County. We've been working with SYAA, my soccer club, and my university program, been working with SYAA soccer for the last nine years and have helped numerous young soccer players, male and female, go on to the collegiate level. We've been able to have some collegiate soccer games there, preseason games. We've run numerous camps there, and the ability to be able to train the youth of this area all year-round in an indoor facility would be something that would allow the youth of this area something they don't have right now, as other people have said, people having to travel to other areas. So to have that here in this town would be fantastic, and we're massive proponents of it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. I'm Matt Turner, 104 Eagle Point Crescent here in Suffolk. I'm an ex-college soccer player myself, soccer dad, coach, all above. I currently drive my daughter to Virginia Beach to play indoor. That's my only option. I live five minutes from the complex. We could use it. My family could use it. The kids in this community need it. Some kids can't afford to drive to Virginia Beach, and they're left out, and that's why I'm here today. I changed my work schedule so I can get my daughter to Virginia Beach. I wouldn't have to do that if this was open. I appreciate your time.
Is anyone else to speak in favor of this conditional use request?
I'm Patrick Bales. I live at 111 Chapel Hill Court in the Chuckatack Borough of this city. I'm the vice president of Suffolk Youth Athletic Association. I've been involved with Suffolk youth for almost 20 years, and I'm also a criminal defense attorney. Suffolk needs a facility like this. We need to present options and opportunities for the children because if we don't provide them, they're going to find ways to occupy their time, and that's where my other profession comes into play, and I don't want to see that. Suffolk has an opportunity to do something very big and very important here. I'm very much in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Come on up, sir.
My name is Jeff Payne, so I'm the applicant on behalf of SYAA. With your permission, could we let Harry Cross leave because I can answer any questions that you may have?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, briefly while I'm here, I've been a volunteer for SYA for 34 years. I've been on the board for 32 years. I've been treasurer for 15 years. Half of our board have been with the club for 20 years. We have a long, long history of quality and consistency. We're constantly growing, and this is a very, very important next step for what our club is trying to do for the youth of Suffolk. We attract a lot of business to the area. On a typical Saturday, we have 5,000 people come to our field from all over Hampton Roads. We typically have 10 or more visiting teams bringing in business from outside, and we are a real heartthrob of the community. We're not just sports. We're a community-oriented organization. We just run a trick-or-treat campaign for the kids. We had 5,000 people attend our event on our fields with a safe environment for the kids, where we give them bounce houses and chili cook-offs and fancy dress and trunk-or-treat prizes, and just a wonderful event. So we need your support. The whole city needs to support what SYA is doing for the youth in this area. So thank you. I'm here if you have any questions.
Thank you, sir. Is anyone else in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this request?
Hopefully, I'll be the last one. My name's Phil Poe. I live at 2104 Kings Highway. I've been involved with the league for about 30 years. I've held just about every position except head commissioner, because that's too tough. Been on the board. This league has done nothing but grow, and that's nothing but positive. I have three generations involved in soccer. My granddaughters are out there now, and I wouldn't encourage them to be there if I didn't support it 100%. It's been fantastic for me and my family. Please support this change. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is anyone else to speak in favor? Okay.
My name is Darcy Pinchback. I'm the field hockey commissioner at SYA. We are starting to organize different sports for field hockey, and indoor facility would really, really help, especially in the winter seasons. Right now, my daughter is a field hockey player, and she is a senior. And I've had to take her to Virginia Beach for four years to try to play on the turf field, on indoor field and facility. She was able to get a scholarship through trying to play hockey for college. So I think this would benefit all the youth, and we only have a great vision to build from. So I think that you guys should really put this in the mind, and I think it's really great for Suffolk. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That concludes the time for the proponents. Is there anyone in the audience against this request? Sit down, Bob. Okay, I'll close the public hearing on the conditional use request, CUP 2024-00020. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion?
I've got a comment. I have gone to the Virginia Beach facility before, so it helps me envision what they're trying to accomplish. I'm hearing nothing but positive things out of this. So I would recommend approval of CUP 2024-020.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion in the motions? Hearing none. Wyer, your call for the vote, please.
Commissioners, please vote. The motion's approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay. I can say congratulations the second time for both items. It's been approved by this body, and we will forward this to City Council at their January 15th meeting. Congratulations again. The next item on our agenda is the conditional use permit request, CUP 2024-010, and it's 127 Berkshire Boulevard. Mr. Wyer, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Conditional use permit request, CUP 2024-010, 127 Berkshire Boulevard, submitted by Shamika Dirteun, applicant and property owner, on behalf of Jaclyn Clemens, property owner in accordance with Sections 31306, 31406, and 31701 of the Unified Development Ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a daycare, family day home, five to 12 children on property located at 127 Berkshire Boulevard, zoning map 25G, parcel 4*137. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Chuckettuck Voting Borough, Zoned PD Plan Development Overlay Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Central Growth Area Suburban Use District. A resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council when you act on this request on conditional use permit, CUP 2024-010. Once again, staff planner Matthew Madariaga will present our report on this item.
Good afternoon again, Chairman and Planning Commissioners. This conditional use permit request before you today is to establish a family day home for up to 12 children on property located at 127 Berkshire Boulevard. The subject property is part of the Chuckettuck Voting Borough and part of the Suburban Use District in the Central Growth Area as designated by the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. The property is Zoned PD Plan Development and is located in Berkshire Meadows subdivision. Since the PD zoning does not specifically outline permitted uses such as family day homes, we refer to the zoning district that is most similar. The property is most compatible in lot size, use, and density with RC and RM zoning districts, both of which require conditional use permit for an in-home daycare for five to 12 children. The property is surrounded to the northwest and south by detached single-family dwellings, also Zoned PD. To the east, the property is bordered by Center Brook Commons Apartments, Zoned OI, Office Institutional Zoning District. The applicant proposes to utilize the two-story, single-family home that is approximately 1,728 square feet with four bedrooms and two and a half baths. The home is currently operating as a family day home for up to four children. The applicant is proposing to utilize the first floor only, and the children will have access to the daycare room, living room, family room, and one bathroom. The kitchen will be utilized for food preparation. This aerial view shows that there's more than enough parking, both in the driveway and on the street, for the applicant to comply with the minimum requirement of four spaces as set forth by the UDO. This family day home is not currently a licensed family day home through the Virginia, I'm sorry. Yeah, is not currently a licensed family day home through the Virginia Department of Education, though the applicant does have her business license from the city for the operation of a home daycare for up to four children. The applicant will have to comply with all child-to-staff ratios as set forth by the Virginia Department of Education. Section 31-701 of the Unified Development Ordinance provides supplemental standards for a family day home with five to 12 children. The family day homes are required to have 50 square feet of space per child if furniture and equipment are included. If the entire first floor is used, the daycare will utilize approximately 675 square feet of the home's 1,728 square feet, which is adequate space for the requested maximum of 12 children. The minimum square footage needed is 600 square feet for 12 children. The proposed hours of operation are 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Staff has recommended the hours of 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM in consistency with what is outlined in the Unified Development Ordinance. The home has a wooden privacy fence bordering the approximately 5,000-square-foot backyard, which meets the required minimum 1,000-square-foot outdoor play area for a family day home. The use of the outdoor play area will be limited between the hours of 8:00 AM and 6:00 PM in accordance with supplemental standards. Staff believes that the proposed family day home for five to 12 children is not expected to adversely impact the surrounding neighborhood. The Departments of Public Works, Utilities, Traffic, and the Bureau of Fire have reviewed this request and have no concerns at this time. Therefore, staff recommends approval of CUP 2024-010 with the conditions stated in the staff report. This concludes my presentation. I will stand by for any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. I will now open the public hearing. Who would like to speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon. My name is Scott David Kilborn. I live at 125 Berkshire Boulevard, which is right smack dab next door. Up front, I got to tell you, I'm a retired Navy chief, but I'll try and behave myself. So here's why I think you should recommend approval for this. As you've heard, it's already been in existence for some time for a smaller number of kids. Living right next door, it has never been a problem, a pain, or a nuisance. My next-door neighbor, I take that back, she's actually my friend, has done an excellent job. And if you take a look at that fence, you ought to come by the house and see it. It's a mother beautiful piece of work. I'm kind of envious, actually. But the kids she's taking care of, when the weather's nice outside, they're outside supervised. They're not vegetating in front of the boob tube. If it's inclement weather, they're indoors. I've never heard a complaint. The only time I do hear noise is when the kids have to leave her house, sometimes they scream. I take that as a compliment. Now, my pitch to you, as a Navy chief, trying to be dispassionate about this and unemotional, you're supporting a single mother. Yes, her kids are of age, but if you met them, you'd see why I'd recommend her. She's raised fine young kids, and I don't say that lightly. But you're supporting a single mother. More importantly, you're supporting a small business within the confines of our city that provides a much-needed service to our fellow citizens, some of whom also may be single parents. So I would strongly recommend you approve this. Again, if anyone's going to be affected, it's me, and I am more than happy to come here today and nick out of work to recommend approval for her. And I'm digging the hat. Thank you. By the way, it's way too nice outside to be working.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else to speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon. My name is Donna Brinkley, and I live at 128 Majestic Drive, and it's not too far from this property. I just came today to let you know that I am a grandmother of one of the kids that Ms. Durchen had in her care. And I can tell you today that she is an excellent provider. She loves her kids. She prepares them for their next instruction going to school. I can tell you that my granddaughter, when she was at her daycare, she had all of the instruction that she needed to move forward to the public schools. And right now, today, she is an excellent student in school. She's an honor roll student. She's student of the month. And right now, when I leave here, I got to go to her program for her student of the month. So I recommend that you approve this permit for her. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Brinkley. Is there anyone else to speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon, Chairman and Planning Commissioners. My name is Sarah Knight, and I reside at 260 Holbrook Arch. I highly recommend that Ms. D's daycare and learning development home daycare be approved to receive a conditional use permit to supply to the state as it continues to make a positive impact on the community. My great niece, great nephew, several cousins, and friends have all been beneficial from the center's exceptional services. The children leave the center with a strong sense of confidence, knowledge, wisdom, and important life skills, fully prepared for their educational journey. On the leadership of Ms. Durchen, the center fosters a collaborative environment where parents and Ms. Durchen work together to ensure that learning is both enjoyable and meaningful, meaningful, meaningful for the children, please excuse me. And like the first spokesperson said, he said that she became his friend. Well, for us, she became family. So I do strongly recommend that you would approve this conditional use permit. Thank you so much for your time.
Is there anyone else to speak in favor of this request?
My name is Ms. Janelle Hunter, and I have known the occupant for the permit for today. I've known her for some years. We worked together in the school system. I got off of work early today to come and support my dear sister on today. In the summer, when I am out of school, I do go to the occupant's house to help her with the daycare. She runs a very fine, smooth educational. The children, they are well-known to their alphabet and any type of learning activities before they leave the center. And I also see the growth that they have for someone who actually has to learn how to write their name, and she takes the time that needed with each children, child that comes to her center. So I highly recommend for a permit for her on today, and thank you for your time.
Senator. Anyone else to speak in favor of this request? To conclude the time for the proponents, is there anyone in the audience who is speaking in opposition? No, you're there. Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of CUP 2024-010 with conditions.
Second motion. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Mr. Wyer, your call for the vote, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioners, please vote. Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Congratulations. I'm not going to mess up your name, and I won't try to say it, but this would go to council with a recommendation for approval from this body on January 15th. Congratulations again. Okay, Commissioners, we're moving down to the combined items, and I'm going to read the caption for the E item first, because we need to do that one first before we do the D. Conditional use permit request, CUP 2024-00027, that's pearls and bow ties, and the conditional use permit request, CUP 2024-00015 for pearls and bow ties. And this is combined, and we're going to have one staff report, but we're going to vote on it differently. Mr. Wyer, will you read the captions, please?
Yes, sir. Conditional use permit request, CUP 2024-027, pearls and bow ties, submitted by Roberta Branch and Talbot Branch, applicants and property owners in accordance with Sections 31306 and 31606 of the Unified Development Ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a parking lot not owned or operated by a public agency on property located at East Washington Street, zoning map 34G2512, parcel 1. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Whaleyville Voting Borough, Zoned B2, General Commercial Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Central Growth Area Core Support Use District. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to conditional use permit, CUP 2024-027. The second application that Mr. Madariaga will discuss is the item that you all considered at your meeting last month as it relates to conditional use permit request, CUP 2024-015, pearls and bow ties, submitted by Roberta Branch and Talbot Branch, applicants and property owners in accordance with Sections 31306 and 31406 of the Unified Development Ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a public assembly not otherwise enumerated on property located at 506 East Washington Street, zoning map 34G2512, parcels 1 and 2. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Whaleyville Voting Borough, Zoned B2, General Commercial Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as being a part of the Central Growth Area Core Support Use District. Once again, he's getting a lot of work out today. Staff planner Matthew Madariaga.
Good afternoon again, Chairman and Planning Commissioners. This conditional use permit request before you today is to establish a parking commercial use on property located at East Washington Street in support of CUP 2024-015. The proposed public assembly not otherwise enumerated use on property located at 506 East Washington Street. The subject properties are located within the Central Growth Area Core Support Use District and the Whaleyville Voting Borough. The property is located in the B2 General Commercial Zoning District. The property is bordered by vacant land, Zoned M2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District to the north, various businesses, Zoned B2 to the south. north, various businesses, Zoned B2 to the south, various lots, Zoned B2, as well as residential homes, Zoned RM Residential Medium Zoning District to the east, and more businesses and a railroad, Zoned M2 to the west. The applicant proposes to use parcel 34G25 (11) to *1 as a parking lot in support of the proposed public assembly at 506 East Washington Street. The applicant has provided a cross-access easement agreement for the two parcels. The proposed parking will provide 26 spaces for the adjacent use as shown on the applicant's provided parking exhibit. The applicant has submitted CUP 2024-015 concurrently with CUP 2024-027 in order to establish a public assembly not otherwise enumerated use on the adjacent property located at 506 East Washington Street. Approval of the public assembly use is contingent on approval of the parking lot use. The applicant's request is to establish a public assembly not otherwise enumerated use with the aim of providing a community center for skills workshops, tutoring, and vendor shows in addition to being a multipurpose space for events such as baby showers, birthday celebrations, ministry events, and retirement parties. The building is 2,371 square feet with around 800 square feet dedicated as the banquet hall with various other offices, office and storage rooms. The applicant states that there will be no employees, but that the business owner or a representative shall be present for all events, and that furthermore, there will be no alcohol permitted on the property. Food is proposed to be catered with no preparation on site. The applicant has proposed outdoor cooking of grilled foods, but due to limited parking and outdoor space, staff has included conditions that limits all use to indoors only. The UDO calls for a minimum of one parking space per every 50 square feet, meaning a total minimum of 48 spaces for the proposed use. The proposed parking only has room for 26 parking spaces, therefore, staff has included a condition that limits the proposed assembly use to 1,300 square feet, which more than covers the banquet hall, bathrooms, and some of the storage and office spaces. The rest of the space in the building will be allowed for storage. Additionally, since the proposed parking for this adjacent lot to the building also owned by the applicant, the applicant proposes to provide parking for the proposed use through cross-access easement agreement with the adjacent parcel. Staff has included a condition that stipulates that if for any reason in the future parking is no longer available on the adjacent parcel, CUP 2024-015 thereby becomes null and void unless provisions for adequate parking are made satisfactory to the City of Suffolk Department of Planning and Community Development. Staff believes the proposed use of a public assembly not otherwise enumerated is not expected to adversely impact the surrounding neighborhood. The Departments of Public Works, Utilities, and Traffic have reviewed this request and have no concerns at this time. The Bureau of Fire has also reviewed this request and has requested a city water model to ensure adequate flow as well as a fire flow calculation summary to detail fire flow requirements. This will be addressed in the Certificate of Occupancy process through the Building Department. The conditional use permit process evaluates the proposed use of the land, not necessarily that of the building. The building officials review process for the Certificate of Occupancy is charged with ensuring that all required codes are met before the use can commence. Therefore, staff recommends approval of CUP 2024-015 with a condition stated in the staff report. This concludes my presentation. I will stand by for any questions after the public hearing.
I will now open the public hearing on conditional use permit request, CUP 2024-00027. Who would like to speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon. My name is Roberta Branch. I reside at 1098 Union Branch Road, Corr always North Carolina. I stand before you to say good afternoon again and stand before you to ask for approval for both CUPs, especially the one for the parking lot. I also took the recommendation to reach out to Baum Church to get an agreement with Baum Church for extra parking, and I do have that agreement in hand as well. So I asked that you approve both CUPs. I did go over the use for the building the last time I was there, November 19th. I don't know if we need to go back through that, but the vision is to operate as a community center somewhere for people to come for tutoring, activities that will bring the community closer together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Branch. Is there anyone else to speak in favor of this request? Hearing none. Is there anyone who is speaking in opposition? Hearing none. I will now close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion?
I'd like to move approval of CUP 2024-027 with any conditions.
That's with five conditions.
Second.
Got a second. Got a second and a motion and a second. Any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. The call for the vote, Mr. Wyman.
Commissioners, please vote. Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Congratulations, half the battle. Now remove the conditional use permit request, CUP 2024-00015. I will now have the public hearing on that. Who would like to speak in favor of that? Ms. Branch, you have any additional comments you would like to make?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is anyone else to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone to speak in opposition? Seeing none, hearing none. We will close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion?
I can make a motion for approval of CUP 2024-015 with all conditions.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Mr. Wyman, your call for the vote, please.
Commissioners, please vote. Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Congratulations, Ms. Branch. You have the approval of both of these conditional use permits, and this will go to City Council on January 15th with the recommendation for approval. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the conditional use permit request, CUP 2024-00022. Secretariat Solar. And Mr. Wyman, you read the caption, please.
Yes, sir. Conditional use permit request, CUP 2024-022, Secretariat Solar, submitted by Esther Reckelman, Secretariat Solar LLC, applicant on behalf of Wendy Parker and John Parker, property owner, in accordance with Sections 31306, 31406, and 31724 of the Unified Development Ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a solar energy facilities use on property located at 6100 Cretendon Road, zoning map 10 parcel 50. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Chukatac Voting Borough, Zone A Agricultural Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Rural Conservation Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and a recommendation to City Council related to conditional use permit, CUP 2024-022. Staff Planner Gonzalo Borges will present staff's report.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Planning Commissioners. It's good to have somebody different than Matthew presenting. And so I'm happy to be here doing that job. This conditional use permit request before you today is to establish three-megawatt solar energy facilities use on 6,100 Cretendon Road, tax map 1050, which is located in a rural conservation use district at the Chukatac Borough and outside of the Northern Growth Area. The subject property is Zone A Agricultural. It totals approximately 155 acres and consists of agricultural land, vacant agricultural land, wooded wetlands, and an equine boarding facility. This property also includes the landowner's residential home. The energy generating system is designed to occupy approximately 17 acres, and the fenced-in area is 25 acres. The surrounding land uses are the following: to the north, a cleared field with floor-stall land, Zone A Agricultural; to the south, detached single-family dwellings that are Zone RE Residential Estate and wetlands and lakes, Zone C Conservation; to the east, cleared field with forested land, Zone A Agricultural, and single-family detached dwellings, Zone A Agricultural; to the west, agricultural land, Zone A Agricultural, and single-family detached dwellings, Zone RE Residential Estate. The applicant, Secretariat Solar LLC, is requesting to establish a solar energies facilities use, a three-megawatt solar energy facility, per Section 31724 of the Unified Development Ordinance encompassing 17 acres of energy generating equipment and 25 acres of fenced area at 6,100 Cretendon Road in the Chukatac Borough. According to the applicant, the proposed facility is being developed for inclusion in the Dominion's Energies Shared Solar Program. The site offers direct access to Dominion's existing distribution infrastructure in proximity to the Cretendon Substation on Cretendon Road. The distribution lines run via an easement through the property, allowing the point of interconnection to remain within the property. The proposed facility meets the required medium setback from the adjacent public roads and residential uses. All residents are between 700 to 1,100 feet away from the facility. In addition to setbacks, the residents will also have a 50-feet mature dense vegetation from the southwestern property boundary and Cretendon Road to shield their view shed from the facility. At the northern border with the Cretendon Road, the fence line is set back about 750 feet or more from Cretendon Road. The vegetative buffer between the fence line and the Cretendon Road will be 50 feet. At the western border, the fence line is set back about 490 feet from the southwestern property line with Meadowbrook Farm Bed and Breakfast and about 1,200 feet from the main residence on Meadowbrook Property. There will be a 50-foot vegetation along the property line with a Meadowbrook Bed and Breakfast. At the southern border, the fence line is set back about 70 feet from the southern property boundary. At the eastern border, the fence line is set back about 1,000 feet from the eastern property boundary. The applicant proposes building a new road for ingress and egress to the site in order to avoid impacting the view shed of residential neighbors, as well as impacting the horse farm operations on the property. The entrance will be off Cretendon Road. According to the applicant, the facility will utilize passive photovoltaic PV cells consisting of common materials including glass, polymer, aluminum, copper, and silicon semiconductor material. Solar PV panels function as solid state inert crystal composed of non-toxic materials and are most like a pan of solid glass. There are no chemicals, fluids, or materials that can enter the environment according to the applicant and the studies provided. A soil search was done for the property utilizing the United States Department of Agriculture's Web Soil Survey, WSS. Based on the WSS, the 14 acres within the fence line and a portion of the access road are located on soils designated as prime farmland. It is important to note that while these soils are designated as prime farmland, they are not actively being farmed with either agriculture or silviculture practices. According to the narrative provided by the applicant, the property owners, the Parkers, had made clear that they wanted to use the currently vacant land, pardon, in some way, but cared deeply for the land, their community, and their horses. Therefore, they choose to work with the applicant, Secretariat Solar LLC, Exagon Energy LLC, because they wanted a use that would be productive but low impact on the land and surrounding area. In addition, Exagon Energy has actively engaged with the properties surrounding the community, especially next to the Oakland-Chukatac Civic League. The applicant chose to donate to the Oakland-Chukatac Civic League's National Night Out Event, and they have also learned about the addition of Glass Sock Farm to the Lone Star Lakes Park that is currently being reviewed by the city, and decided to donate to that effort as well as part of their permit approval. The applicant provided visuals of the proposed landscaping and screening showing the facility's appearance post-development relative to the existing conditions from the public right-of-way. Those are the images that you can see now on the screen. You can see different points of view and how, depending on where you were positioned, you would see, or what you would be able to see. The images demonstrate the approximate visual impact of the facility from the vantage points of neighboring properties and roads. Limited three-clearing is proposed, and where existing vegetation is not adequate, a landscape screening buffer will be installed. We can now see some pictures that show the facility. I don't know if you can see it. It's out there in the back in this first picture, and out here you would see it as well. So those images show us sort of where the panels would be in relation to the surrounding properties and the road. In this picture, we can see the screening that is proposed, and from the left to the right, we have sort of the evolution of that same, those same trees. So the year zero, year five, and year 10. We can see the vegetation growing, obviously. From Cretendon Road and Kings Highway and nearby residents, the array will be inaudible. In accordance with UDO Section 31724(c1e), the applicant hired a licensed third-party sound engineer from Accents to perform a noise study to model the effects of any noise produced by the project. The results of these studies show that Secretariat Solar LLC met all the ordinance noise limits for the zoning district. Sound from the project will not exceed the performance standards for noise in residential receiving properties lying adjacent to or within 500 feet or above ground equipment of the facility adhering to Section 31608(c8) and Table 6081. For residential receiving zone, the limits are 60 dB, 55 dB, and 50 dB for morning, afternoon, and evening, and nighttime respectively. The modeled noise levels at the property boundaries neighboring residential use will not exceed the daytime or evening noise levels standards of the Suffolk UDO. Accent Tech did a model sound study based on a specification of proposed equipment and found that at the nearest residential property boundary, which is the Meadowbrook Farm Bed and Breakfast property, the expected noise level will be at 30 dB. During the operation, the project will require very little traffic to the site. As you can see on the site, on the slides, we have three construction routes, haul routes. And traffic will average less than two trips per month. During construction, which lasts about three to four months, the intensity of trucks coming in and out of the site will vary, with most trucks coming in the middle months when the construction is at its peak. In staff's opinion, that it is, it is staff's opinion that the site in question is appropriate for the proposed use given the location outside of the Northern Growth Area of the Comprehensive Plan. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit request, CUP 2024-0022. I would like to ask the Mr. Chairman and the Commissioners to, when you make a motion, to make that motion to the amended resolution. We have to swap. We had a typo where the applicant was actually the agent and the agent the applicant, so I would like you all to take some attention to that. This concludes my presentation. I stand by for some, for questions, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Mr. Wyman, clarification on the Exhibit A? That was an amended resolution, right?
Yes, that's correct. The way it is currently worded in the resolution that you were provided has the applicant listed as the agent, and that would be modified to correct that issue. So when you, should you move to recommend approval of this, it would be appropriate to do so as amended with the modifications.
Do we do a modification now?
No. You have it in front of you?
No, I don't. Okay. I will now open the public hearing on conditional use permit request, CUP 2024-00022. Who would like to speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon, Chairman Singleton, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Esther Reckelman, on behalf of Hexagon Energy located at 321 East Main Street in Charlottesville, Virginia. Speaking on behalf... Speaking on behalf of the Secretariat Solar Project, I want to thank staff for their thorough presentation and recommendation of approval, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of all of you today. I know that I'm very limited in my time to speak, and there are quite a few folks that want to also speak in favor, so I will request that you make a motion for an extra five minutes, and I do apologize if my cadence picks up a little bit today. Hexagon Energy is a Virginia-based solar developer with over nine years of experience, including community-scale solar projects here in the Commonwealth. We take pride in holding our projects to high standards so that we can maintain a strong reputation and ensure continued success in the areas that we work. When we first met the Parker family, they shared desire to add solar to their property without affecting their equestrian business, Horse Spa Farm, which they started about twenty years ago on this property. After learning a little bit about the property's history, we, together with input from the Parkers, identified about twenty acres of the larger one-hundred-and-fifty-five-acre farm that was suitable for this type of development. I'll let Mrs. Parker, who's going after me, speak a little bit more to the history of the property, but the twenty-acre area that we're developing, it used to at one point be farmed, but for the last decade or so, it has been an untouched field that has not been used. This twenty-acre area, as I said, untouched, remains tucked away in the corner of the property with no impact on the equestrian farm's operations or surrounding natural areas or neighbors. Hexagon engaged with the community early on. We knocked on doors to neighbors on Cretenden Road and King's Highway, left leaflets at the door for those that weren't home. The main question from those neighbors was whether or not their view shed would be impacted, and it was an easy answer for us. We knew that the answer would be no. Partially, that's because if you're driving down Cretenden Road right now, thanks to Mrs. Parker, she already planted a lot of vegetation along those property boundaries, and so if you're driving down Cretenden Road or even standing at any of the property boundaries, you can't see what's going on inside the property. But Secretariat Solar, the project, does guarantee a fifty-foot-wide vegetative buffer, so what we're going to do is fill in the vegetation where gaps might exist to ultimately create the fifty-foot-wide buffer. There's also a few neighbors who were not able to make it to today's hearing, who wanted to share some notes of support for the project. If you do grant the extra five minutes, I am able to read those as well. We also presented at the Oakland-Chukotuck Civic League where we learned that folks wanted to see some more community benefits coming away from this project. We learned a little bit more about the Civic League and about their National Night Out Event, and we decided that would be a great cause to contribute to and donate to, and we hope to be there in August when that event rolls around. We also learned about the Glassock Farm addition to Lone Star Lakes Park that's currently going through the city's Parks and Recreation Department. It's located across from the Chukotuck Volunteer Fire Station, and so we wanted to donate to that effort as well. I know that recently, there's been a lot of frustration about the noise coming from the Stratford Solar Project on White Marsh Road, begging the question of how the solar facility will affect its neighbors. I really want to emphasize that our project is different in terms of size and equipment placement compared to Stratford Solar. Our noise study, which we're required to complete based on the city's current solar ordinance, shows that the nearest property boundary, which is Meadowbrook Farm Bed and Breakfast, at that property boundary, the sound generated by our equipment will only be about thirty decibels. We're well within the city's noise standards and can confidently say that this project will not negatively affect anyone in the surrounding area's quality of life. We brought our sound engineer with us today and encourage you to ask him any questions during the discussion period about this project and about our sound study. We will respectfully request an amendment to the proposed Condition Number Eight of our conditional use permit. Currently, the condition requires us to meet the sound limits specified in our noise model study, which you saw on the screen earlier. Our study shows noise levels, oh, sorry, excuse me. Currently, the condition requires us to meet the sound limits specified within our noise model study, and the completion of the model noise study was a requirement of Section 31724 of the Unified Development Ordinance. The purpose of the sound study as required by this ordinance was to demonstrate that our project does not exceed noise performance standards for nearby residential properties, and we met that intent and demonstrated this with the results of our sound study. For context, the Unified Development Ordinance limits noise to fifty-five decibels, fifty, and forty-five decibels during the day, evening, and night. Our study shows noise levels well within these limits. A major concern that we have with this condition as written is that if someone without proper experience goes out and measures sound at the property boundary, it can measure as higher than what our sound study shows due to ambient noise, which, as measured, is already louder than what our project is expected to generate. It can therefore lead down a slippery slope of penalizing our project due to factors outside of our control, even though we meet the noise standards of the UDO. Therefore, we request that Condition Eight instead be revised to align with the Unified Development Ordinance's nighttime noise limit of forty-five decibels. While we understand that the intention of the condition is to protect the citizens of Suffolk, we think that limiting us to nighttime noise limits all day can actually achieve the same goal. As outlined in the staff report, this project complies with the city's Unified Development Ordinance and Comprehensive Plan. It's well-sighted. It only takes up about twenty acres of the larger one-hundred-and-fifty-five-acre property and creates no visual or auditory impact to neighbors and surrounding areas, thanks to its ample setback in buffering. Therefore, we respectfully request the commission's recommendation of approval with the amendment of Condition Number Eight. I'm happy to answer any questions, and thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak in favor of this request? We have about four minutes left.
My name is Wendy Parker, and my husband, John, and I bought the last part of the Saunders Estate in 2003. I always wanted to develop a facility for horses that was considered really healthy. I was also very lucky to find property fifteen minutes from my parents' house. They've lived in Chukotucks and see. They built a house there in seventy-seven. We've had, we've tried to develop that property in different ways over the years. When I first got the property, I asked Mo, a friend farmer, if he would want to grow beans there, and he did for about four years until he realized that the deer won every time, and he was done feeding the deer. We asked, we invited another farming brothers to come by and look, and they did, and they said, "It's just too small to bring the equipment. Twenty-one acres is just not worth it." A few years later, while, actually, yeah, a few, we developed the farm, we, it was a few years later, the business was going well, the farm, we still had this twenty-one acre sitting there. And about that time, I was informed that I had lost my land use eligibility, land use program eligibility without any reasoning whatsoever, and that was a source of great grief because it increases our taxes significantly, tax base. I finally got an answer a few months later, and I was told that if I would just bag the composted manure and sell it, that I would be eligible for the land use exemption program. Unfortunately, I was in the middle of a significant health crisis, and I just didn't have the energy to start a new side hustle, and I just, I just wanted to keep my horse boarding facility going. When I got back on my feet, I connected with a young man who wanted to do regenerative farming, something I was really intrigued by, so I gave him a free three-year lease to come, and before he arrived, the pandemic arrived, and instead of bringing the cycle, what you need for cycles of regenerative farming, he met up with a hedge, an equity guy in Manhattan, and he showed up with two big stock cars with eighteen head of very hungry cattle. That's not regenerative farming at all. And I spent the next two and a half years trying to work with him to find grassy patches throughout all of my property just to keep him alive, and he really didn't know what he was doing, and so I asked him to leave. I gave him six months to leave, which he did. And meanwhile, I started getting a lot of solicitation from solar energy companies, and I thought it was an ideal fix, way to use the farm because it really doesn't bother anybody. I mean, it doesn't, doesn't smell. I mean, I could bring in all kinds of animals. It doesn't smell. It doesn't draw water out of the artesian well. It's, it also, because it's so far back and so much vegetation that it's really quiet. And there's nothing ugly to look at, you know, because it's panels covered by trees and then now more trees. I chose Hexagon out of all the solicitations because it's a Virginia company. They're out of Charlottesville. Esther was superb in going over things with me and making sure we all agreed. I didn't want any Roundup being used. I wanted it to be grasses, et cetera, et cetera, and they were all fine with that. So I feel like some people, I've heard a lot of comments about the, you know, you're going to hurt Mother Nature. And my point is, for eighty-plus years, the only thing that, the only, I mean, the job of that property was to make, grow peanuts and cotton. It wasn't to be a nature preserve. Since I took over twenty-one years ago, it's, you know, come back with a vengeance. Wonderful to see how the species come back. This solar facility will have a gap in fencing that allows critters and ground birds to come and go because they're not going to use Roundup. So all that in mind, I just think that this is the best fit, but I really did try a lot of other things, so thank you for your time. Any questions?
We'll save the questions after the public hearing.
Sorry. Okay.
That completes the time for the proponents. Are there anyone in the audience in opposition to this request? Come up, sir.
Opposition, right?
In opposition, you're against it.
My name is Nunzio Missari. I live in Chukotuck and in Summer Creek, which is very close to where they want to put these panels, whatever they are, the solar panels that they, to me, it's very wrong that land is surrounded by homes, a lot of houses with kids, okay? They're talking about noise, but they don't know about the radiation that they can create. My grandkids and kids, they're going to absorb all this. This is, that thing is in a neighborhood, and there's a lot of houses, if you, you know, we go from King's Highway and the other road, it's a lot of houses that people pay more than half a million dollars each. Summer Creek has fifty homes, big homes, and it's beautiful homes, and their value is going to go down once this is going to be approved, and I'm very against it because it's very dangerous, and they don't say, they only talk about noise. What about the radiation? And they are killing the farm. After that, the land is going to be worthless. So I'm here to tell you not to pass this because it's in the wrong place. They need to go somewhere where there's no people to draw electricity from the sun, not in a neighborhood that is growing, you know, very much. Right now, Chukotuck is growing, and with this, it can't grow. It's going to be dead, and nobody wants to build a house next to a solar farm. So please, do not give them the okay for this. I came from work, that's why I'm dressed like this, because I'm a working person, but, you know, I hope I came here for this, for a good reason, okay? And I thank you so much for listening to me, and I hope you consider what I say. It's not just the noise that it's going to be. It's going to be radiation in people's home. King's Highway and that thing right there is right, there's a bunch of homes right across from that where the sign is rezoning. There is a lot of homes right there, and then there is the neighborhood where I live. Then there is the further down. It's, I think it's in the wrong place. Please do not pass it. Do not give them the okay, and I thank you so much, and have a nice Christmas.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak in opposition?
How you doing? Damien Desermot, I live in Chukotuck. I mean, another thing it's going to do is, there's a Lone Star State Park right there. It's going to put noise there as well that will be there constantly. If they're saying they can stay below the thirty dB during the day, why do they need the variance to go to forty-five for that, for the daytime to be able to have that at nighttime as well? That makes no sense. I've heard contradicting numbers. I've heard fourteen acres, seventeen acres, twenty acres, twenty-five acres. What is it? Once it's established, can they grow past that? So that's just questions I have, or, you know, my statement on it. I recently moved to the area because it was farmland. I wanted to get out of the city. I grew up in Virginia Beach, moved to Norfolk, moved to Chesapeake, and I've continued to grow out, getting away from the city, and I'm not looking to, I just spent three-quarters of a million dollars on a house, that now I'm going to have a solar farm down the road? I would tell you right now, I'll be leaving again. It's unsat to me. It's a rural area. It should be, stay a rural area. It should not be allowed to have a solar farm in the area. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else to speak in opposition?
I'm Kitty Martin. I live on Everett's Road in Chukotuck. I have been a business owner there for forty-five years, and I love Chukotuck. I love being in the area, and even though yet the building up is going on all around us, I just would like to know, and I'm a member of the Civic League there, the Greater Oakland and Chukotuck Civic League, and Esther actually came to our meeting months before last and told us about it. And I listen a lot because I feel like I learn more that way, but I'm not usually a speaker, so I feel like I'm, my knees are shaking right now. But my daughter is concerned because she's now running the business I ran in Chukotuck, and she loves the area too. My whole family does, but it's going to be beneficial to the person that owns the property. Is it going to be beneficial to the community? And the noise level, I think I can handle because I'm not that close, living that close. But, and I understand, because the lady that used to own the business in Chukotuck that I run, that she actually used to own all that property, the W.G. Saunders property, and so I'm kind of a little, want to go the way that, I think it's good for everybody, but, so I guess I'm in the middle of the road. I don't know if it's considered opposition or not, but it is a concern, and is it going to affect the wildlife? And she has horses. Is it going to affect her horses from eating the grass that, whatever this radiates from it? You know, things like that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Is there anyone else to speak in opposition? That closes time for opposition. We've got time for rebuttal. We've got five minutes.
I want to thank everyone who provided comments. I'm just going to try to go through some of those points quickly that folks brought up. As far as radiation that the gentleman was concerned about, there is actually a study, there's many studies out there that show that solar facilities do not emit, they emit less radiation than your fridge, so you standing next to your fridge actually emits more radiation onto you than you standing next to a solar facility. As far as noise, I think I mentioned this during my general presentation, and I want to leave some time actually for our sound engineer to come make a few points regarding why folks should not be concerned about noise if they're living in the surrounding area. But as I mentioned, at the closest property boundary, that's about thirty decibels of noise. That's fifteen decibels below what the nighttime noise limits are, and the nighttime noise limits are created in order to, you know, keep the peace, allow people to sleep. The reason I asked for condition, the condition to be amended is because the way that it is written right now, it holds us to the standards that are in our sound study, which sounds great, I agree with that, but the issue is that what we did in our sound study is show the noise generated by the facility, not that combined with some ambient noise, other things that can be creating noise. Essentially, what we're concerned about is being penalized for ambient noise that is being created at a property boundary that's outside of our control. We placed the facility where it is because we wanted it to be tucked away in a corner, not affecting the value of neighbors' homes, not affecting their view shed, really not affecting anyone at all because it is so far away. It's over a thousand feet away from the nearest residence. And as far as the concern regarding the equestrian farm, this landowner actually really wants this facility to be built, to be built in that portion of the property so that she can continue operating her horse business, to continue to afford to operate it, and I don't think she would have chosen this sort of development if she thought it would in any way endanger her horses. And as far as the numbers go... And as far as the numbers go, our fence line, as Gonzalo mentioned, is 25 acres. I said approximately 20 in my presentation, but it's more accurately 25 acres of development. I think the 14 acres that Gonzalo mentioned was actually prime farmland. It was not anything regarding the sizing of the development. So I just wanted to make those clarifications, and I'll let my colleague speak.
Good afternoon. My name is Bill Yoder. I'm an acoustical consultant with Assentec. We performed the sound study as part of this project. And I think just to address some of the concerns I've heard, are, you know, if it's 30 dB, why are we asking for 45 dB instead of, instead of...
Pick a closer mic, please.
Yeah, sure. Instead of trying to meet the 30 dB outlined in the study, why would we want to target the 45? Well, it really comes down to measuring sound levels due to the project and the presence of ambient noise is going to be really difficult. The ambient noise at the project site, the average sound level during the day is almost 50 dB, okay? So the sound coming from the project at the closest residential property boundary is subjectively four times quieter than the ambient sound is. So picking out just the sound from the project will be nearly impossible. So it's really difficult to stipulate that the project has to meet something that's unmeasurable. And then, on top of that, the demonstration of compliance would need to be performed by someone who knows how to measure these in the presence of ambient sound. And that's just really difficult to do. There are, I put together a list of reasons you might not want to do this, to limit it to what's in the sound study. But I totally understand, you know, the sound study should be held as like, this is, this is the, this is our target. But recognize, as outlined in the study, that we're relying on manufacturer's sound data, right? We're relying on computer modeling. And these things have tolerances. So the modeling alone, plus or minus 3 dB. The tolerances from the manufacturer, plus or minus a dB. You've got considerations of wind, considerations of temperature, humidity, temperature inversions. All of these things complicate the demonstration of compliance. It also sets a precedent for future applicants to not include the level of detail necessary to be transparent with the community. And I think in, you know, you have Unified Development Ordinance that clearly outlines sound level limits, and clearly outlines the sound level limits associated with a solar development. And this would set a precedent that says that those aren't good enough, and that whatever you predict at the beginning of a project is what we're going to hold you to. And I would just caution you against doing that. I've run up against the time.
That concludes the time for the public hearing. Close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion? Rick, are you getting ready to say something?
No, the only thing that comes to mind is, we've had some issues regarding sound with solar development, solar farm development. And we've been told that these have, the conditions have changed, and perhaps this is the most up-to-date condition that we have. I know that we had approved previous ones, that we've had some problems with, after it was already, you know, said and done, and the solar farm was operating, it did produce a lot of noise. I would agree that this area that this particular solar farm is going to be located in is not visible, you know, to the, from the street, or even visible to any of the surrounding residences out there because it's basically open, open area farm, old farmland. But that was my only comment about that. I was, I'm just concerned about that because if I were living close to it and this, you know, the sound of this, these, the solar farms that they make, you know, is in the middle of the night or something like that, it would be a problem. So, that's my only, that's my only thing. Only because we have been exposed to that before. I know Planning Department has tried to, or I know that they have been entertaining some opposition to the solar farms in particular. And we have to have, we have to look at these things very closely. So, that's all the comment I have.
I've got a question, and I'm not sure who could answer it. Maybe the sound guy? I was always under the impression, at nighttime, these things pretty much shut down because they're not following the sun. Is that correct? Or where would they generate noise at night?
Yeah, so I want to clarify as well. The reason the applicant is suggesting the nighttime sound level limit isn't because they're worried about sound at night. It's to apply a lower sound level limit that isn't 30 dB. It's something that already exists. It's just a reapplication of the existing Unified Development Ordinance sound level limits. The, to directly answer your question as to what generates sound, there are really two things that generate sound on these projects. The transformer that converts the photovoltaic voltage to voltage to go up onto the transmission lines, that's a medium voltage transformer. That generates sound when it's energized, even if sound isn't flowing from the, from the solar facility itself. So there will still be some sound, though less, at night from the transformer. The inverters, which convert the DC power on the solar panels to AC power into the transformer, only generate noise when they're active. So that is the part that will generate noise only during the day. So, you've sort of got a balance there. There's going to be some generation at night, some sound generations at night, but lower than during the day.
All right, thank you.
While you're there, would you explain to us, you mentioned the ambient noise at being 30 decibels, is, what would that, I mean, what does that equate to?
Some perspective, sure. So 30 dB is very quiet. It's the quietest room in your house without the air conditioner on, and you're standing there by yourself. That's typically, you know, very distant, refrigerator is running, right? And so it's just a quiet room. 50 dB is sort of what you might expect if you, if you were standing outside, actually at the subject property. That's about how loud it is. You hear distant traffic, you hear distant aircraft, you might hear distant farm equipment, that sort of thing. A busy, a busy rural street, say, here in the city of Suffolk, in this downtown area, might be a little higher than that, 55 dB. Conversational speech is about 65 dB. So, you know, this is a logarithmic scale, so the numbers, you know, the numbers don't add together linearly. So, just to add some additional perspective, the project is expected to be 30 dB at the closest property boundary. The ambient sound at that closest property boundary, in the middle of the day, might be 50, right? But we're not, we're not going to add those two things together. 50 plus 30 does not equal 80. In fact, 50 plus 30 still equals 50. Like, the sound level from the project would be so low that it doesn't add anything to the overall sound level of the site.
When you were doing your test, or you were simulating the testing, this project, unlike the others that have come before this body, have all been set back relatively close to the roads and the dwellings that were surrounding it. This project is, you won't be able to see it from the diagrams and the pictures at all. And there's already vegetation, and then the additional 50-foot that you'll be putting would tend to knock down that decibel level even more, would it not, from, how close do you measure, when you were looking at the one that had the little drawing, looked like a pear upside down? How close to that were you measuring? Were you measuring at the road level? Were you measuring right by that facility?
I'd love to have a little laser pointer here, but if you, can you identify where the closest residence is on there, with that Bed and Breakfast?
Sure.
Yeah. So there, the property boundary there is, there's a little jog in the property boundary, it's the black line.
Right.
Just on the project side of the black line. Actually, do this? Okay, great. I'm going to, I'm actually going to go back here.
Right, yeah.
Yes.
Please use the microphone.
Oh.
Go ahead, help you. Forward and back.
Okay, great. All right, thanks. All right, I think actually, this is a, this is a good one. Can, I don't see a way to point with this, but, the top thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's slightly awkward, you have to point at the thing, and he will zoom in.
Give it to you, you know how to control. We measure right around there.
What did you say it was?
Yeah, it's like...
Okay. Right there?
Close.
Yeah.
It's right around there. So, it looks as if it doesn't stay. I'll just hold my finger there. But, right around that location there, so at the property boundary with that nearest resident, roughly equidistant from Crittenton Road as that nearest resident. Further from the, what is that, is that King's Highway? 125, or, yeah, King Highway. So, so we measured ambient sound with all of the existing foliage and any existing, you know, ambient conditions would have included largely trucks on Crittenton Road, vehicle traffic on King's Highway, traffic in the sky from the airports. And in the evenings, insects. I'm sorry, you had asked another question relative to where we measured. I think you were asking about, will foliage make a difference, this increase?
Well, you measured from the yellow line approximately to the loudest, where you projected the loudest noise would be generated, correct?
Yeah, the loudest noise is...
Up at the top.
It's, yeah.
Right up there, I think.
I can show you here. Whoops, wrong way. Okay, the loudest noise is actually going to be, from the project, it's actually going to be right there. Dead center, sort of the...
Now, that's about how far from Crittenton Road? 1,000 feet?
Now what? I don't know.
Okay.
It's 700? Yeah.
700 feet, okay.
We measure a little further from Crittenton than that. But, yeah, we're probably closer to 1,000 if that's 700.
The question that you mentioned, that circle is where the noise, the greatest noise is generated. Is that where the inverter is?
That's where the transformer is. You'll notice, I think I can zoom on this.
The inverters are making the noise, more noise than the transformer?
The inverters actually make a little less because they're distributed, they're what's called a string inverter. So they're actually at the end of a row of photovoltaic cells.
So they are actually on each tier?
Yeah, yeah, basically. See if I can zoom in further, I wanted to, but this might be it. So these little, see the red plus symbols? It's hard to see without making it a little bit bigger, but there are these little red plus symbols scattered around the project site. The top, the most northern one is the transformer. It has the biggest circles around it. Those circles represent sound levels. And then there's a bunch of littler ones, sort of distributed along the center of the solar farm. Those are the string inverters that are distributed around. Now, if those, if that were a one central string inverter, it would be louder than any individual small string inverter. But because they're distributed, they have smaller capacity, so they generate less sound.
And the transformer is going to be elevated on a utility pole?
It's going to be on the ground on a concrete pad.
Could be either or.
Could it? I don't believe so. I think typically they're on the ground, and I'm hearing from the project team that it's on the ground.
Why not put, I spent a few years in power generation, and most time transformers for the 60-cycle hum, you have a wall around those with acoustic panels. Will Hector, the company, provide a barrier around those transformers to cut back on the noise?
I think what the study is, not I think, what the study has shown is that it's unnecessary to provide those. The single 3-megawatt transformer doesn't generate enough sound to really cause a problem. You know, I think we did look at that to see what the benefit would be, and that's in the sound study. But that's not part of, I think, what the applicant is requesting the permit for. I don't think they're putting that in their application.
But for the cost involved in putting that wall around the transformer, looking forward, going down the road, that this generates more noise and is permitted to be pulled, wouldn't that investment make sense in the beginning rather than at the end?
I think it would make sense if it were expected to be a problem, yeah. I would have to defer to the project team since I'm just a consultant...
Okay.
...to address noise, yeah.
Okay. Sorry to put you on the spot there.
As far as, your question is regarding walled mitigation. I think similar to what my colleague said, currently our sound study shows that we don't require, it doesn't create, it doesn't go above city limits for noise, and it is very quiet. But if this ever does cause issues, that can be a mitigation technique. Our hope and our knowledge is that it will not cause those issues, but as a possibility, if necessary, if it ever exceeds the noise limits that are placed on it.
Okay. Again, my statement I made to him, put the wall up before you start, and you won't have to put the wall up later. And we won't have this discussion about decibels at ground level and at night and day.
I understand. I would argue that the wall is not necessary if there's no issue being caused in the first place. But if that is something, if you find that in order to provide recommendation of approval, you feel like you really need that in the permit, so be it.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions, comments?
I've got a question, probably for Kevin. The suggested changes to Condition 8, going along with that, as far as the mitigation, because I understand the one out on White Marsh, they've done some things to mitigate the sound problem out there. Is, if the noise level, and we're just guessing here, if it were to exceed the level that we've approved, as a mitigation, as a city, does the city have the authority to, in enforcing the sound, to require that that sound be mitigated back? If we approve this as it's been presented, and then that develops a problem in the operation, does the city then have the authority to mitigate that with the owner of the project?
So, I think to answer that question, that very reason is why staff felt it important to include this condition. We were provided a noise exhibit as required with our supplemental use standards for solar facilities, and it's incumbent upon us to ensure that they operate in accordance with that noise study. And they're correct, their noise study does go above and beyond what our supplemental use standards establish for receiving zones as it relates to noise within certain districts of the city. However, with the conditional use permit, it allows city council and staff and you all to apply conditions that are... all to apply conditions that are important to mitigate any potential concerns. In this case, we know that there has been a recent string of concerns regarding inverter noise of solar energy facilities, and placing a condition within any approving ordinance gives the city additional leverage when it comes to enforcing compliance with those. So, should they not comply, it would allow the city council to revoke that permit, should they choose, if, if there's a continued failure to comply. However, with that being said, it's very important, the way this condition is structured speaks directly to the use itself. And I know there's some concern on the applicant's end about ambient noise. It's incumbent upon the city to ensure that the noise is coming from the use itself, and we're not capturing ambient noise. They're correct, it is complicated to measure something like that. We have worked, the city, with noise consultants ourselves to ensure uses are being compliant as it relates to noise. But it, it's important, it's timely, and we feel that it's necessary to have that condition remain.
Chairman, I think we've beat this noise issue to death, and...
Sorry I asked.
No, I'm not sorry you asked. I'm not sorry you asked, there was a reason that it had to happen, but I think we beat it up enough. And I think that staff, between staff and this noise piece that, that the company put in that went over and beyond what we would normally have, and because the persons that would be affected are a thousand feet away, and it is the people who own the property, I just, sorry that I have to say, let's, let's go with this. CUP 2024-00022, I move approval with any conditions. The new, the revised, well, Exhibit A.
Okay. The amended resolution. Okay. You got a second?
Second to motion.
Got a second? Any discussion of motion?
Mr. Chairman, I have one question, if I can, to staff, because it was kind of said and glossed over. It was, it was a statement said about the farmland, about it was like good soil or something in the staff report? Was that, was that correct? You may have mentioned about the soil, although it wasn't being used for farming anymore. You said y'all did a soil study?
Yes.
And that the soil was considered...
The application includes soils study...
Right.
That says that the soil in the prop, the subject property is prime farming soil, although it's not been used for some time for agricultural or seviculture. That's what I meant.
So, so my question is, so if we have soil that's real good for farming, the only time the standard of good soil should be in our consideration is if it's currently being used for farming? Is that correct?
Not necessarily. We, we work really closely with our agricultural advisory committee, among other interested parties, to ensure that we're evaluating all aspects of a, of any land use case. So, part of our recent string of ordinance updates as it relates to the supplemental use standards for, for solar energy facilities, we wanted to ensure that we had a good survey of the soil itself. Prime agricultural lands, there are plenty of them in the city of Suffolk. It's not necessarily up to us whether they're used for farming or not, and with, with decommissioning regulations like we have for these, it doesn't mean that it won't be used for farming in the future. But it was important for us to understand that, to make up the fabric of any good analysis for any land use application, so. It's good information to have at the same time. It's not something that has been recently farmed, and that's also important. If that makes sense. I get the John Edwards...
Oh, no, yeah, that's good. Thank you. Thanks, Commissioner. Any other discussion of the motion? Here and now. Mr. Wyman, your call for the vote, please.
Yes, sir. Cooperates, give me one moment. All right, commissioners, please vote. Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of six to one.
Okay. Congratulations. This will go to city council on January 15th with the amended resolution and conditions as presented by staff. This concludes the public hearings for today. The next item on our agenda is old business. Do we have any old business? I think so.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And before we move to new business, there will take a five-minute recess. Put the timer on, please.
I'm gonna take one anyway. I'm the only one.
I'd like to call the planning commission back to order. Next item we have on our agenda is the new business, staff report presentation on the proposed CIP for 2026 to 2035. Mr. Wyman, you have any comments on this?
I know, other than tis the season that we talk about, the capital improvements plan, this is something that is a process year in, year out, and you all, as the planning commission, play an important role in the adoption of it, as you make a recommendation to city council to ensure that the capital improvements plan that we put together and ultimately that the city manager presents to you all for consideration aligns with the comprehensive plan that we have that serves as a guide on all land use items. So, with that being said, we are happy to have Charles Meek, our finance director, with us today to walk you through the capital improvements plan as it is drafted at this point, with the hope of putting it on your agenda for next month for formal recommendation and consideration. But at this point, he'll provide a walkthrough.
Good afternoon, Chairman Singleton, members of the planning commission, pleased to present to you today the fiscal year 2026, 2035 proposed capital improvements program and plan. As Kevin mentioned, this has been a three or four month long process getting to this point. We've had many meetings. I'd like to thank the budget office staff for their hard work and efforts in analyzing and reviewing all of the requests that have come in, as well as the city departments for the requests and for answering questions throughout the process. I'd also like to thank Commissioner Goodman and Commissioner Staler for serving on our CIP subcommittee. Just as a reminder, a little bit of overview, the CIP is a plan. It addresses the city's infrastructure needs over 10 years. We emphasize the first five years of the plan. We use it as a financial planning tool for budget projections to ensure compliance with our financial policies in developing funding proposals for capital projects. The document is updated annually, as you know, and the first year of the plan is included in the city manager's proposed budget for consideration by city council. The CIP process, you know, really begins in September. We receive the requests from departments in Suffolk Public Schools. City manager holds meetings with departments in October, and then we prepare the city manager's proposed CIP. We meet with the CIP subcommittee in November, and then ultimately move the document forward to the planning commission in December and January, and then move it forward to city council, where we hold a public hearing at the second meeting and have adoption, and then, again, the first year is included in the proposed budget, which gets rolled out in April. The roles of the CIP subcommittee and planning commission, this process that we have for the CIP was put in place about 17 years ago, with the thought being for the subcommittee, where we hold a meeting with the mayor, the vice mayor, two members of the planning commission to provide an initial assessment or look at the proposed CIP to ensure that it addresses the major critical infrastructure needs of the city, as well as aligns with the comprehensive plan. And then moving it forward to the planning commission, again, for reviewing it to ensure conformance with the comp plan and providing any recommendations along the way. Each year, the number of requests and the amount of funding required for the requests far exceeds our ability to afford projects, so we have, have to prioritize. And our priorities this year were to take, take a view at the requests, to complete ongoing projects, maintain our city buildings and facilities, leverage state and federal funds where possible, enhance quality of life for our citizens, address regulatory changes, particularly in the area of public utilities, and then maintaining affordability and compliance with our key financial policies. The proposed five-year CIP totals $533.8 million across all funds, with the public utilities fund at $101.7 million, the fleet fund and projects at four point, almost $4.2 million, stormwater fund $17.3, transit at $5.1, refuse at $3 million, and then the general government fund at $402.5 million. The 10-year total is a little over $2 billion. Looking at general government projects, the planned expenditures, again, at $402.4 million, planned revenues to support that include $165.9 million in general obligation bonds, $158.4 million in state and federal funding, general fund cash and capital reserve cash at $75.1 million, cash proffers at $2.1 million, and then route 17 taxing district funds at $700,000, and cemetery funds at $143,000. The planned expenditures over the first five years, 47% of the dollars are allocated for transportation projects, 24% for public schools, 12% for public safety, 7% for parks and recreation projects, 5% for public buildings and facilities, and 4% for village, neighborhood, and downtown initiatives. Looking at the expenditures in terms of just how we're allocating the local funds, so general obligation bonds and general fund cash, 40% of our local funding is going towards school projects, 19% for public safety, 16% for transportation, 9% for public buildings, 8% for parks and recreation, and 7% for village neighborhoods and downtown. So, the big take... So the big takeaway there is transportation leverages a lot of state and federal funding, and we will be discussing that in the upcoming slides. And then again, the revenues to support the general government projects, just a pie chart here showing bonds at 41%, state, federal, and other, to include the cash proffer and the cemetery and Route 17 funds at 40%, and then 19% for general fund and capital reserve Looking at specific projects in the area of parks and recreation, we have our capital Parks and Recreation Maintenance Project. It's $4.1 million proposed over the first five years. This is to upgrade and repair maintenance of parks facilities. Fiscal year 26, funding allocates dollars to replace boat ramps at Bennetts Creek Park. There's also additional funding programmed in fiscal year 28 for Holland Ball Field lighting. The next project is Lone Star Lakes Park. We have $1 million for improvements to the access road in fiscal year 26, and then 241,000 proposed in fiscal year 30 to start the design of the proposed welcome center. Trail enhancements at existing parks, $60,000 every other year to enhance or add trails at our existing park facilities. We have three phases of Seaboard Coastline Trail projects in the CIP. In the first five years, the Phase 1 is $150,000 in fiscal year 26, and that's to match $4.1 million in grant funding that's already been received for that project, so that will extend the trail from Moore Avenue to Suburban Drive. Seaboard Coastline Trail Phase 3C is $7.8 million, and that is grant funding to extend the trail from Nansman River High School to about Pine Tree Way off of Nansman Parkway. Also in Parks and Recreation, we have the Driver Complex Project. You've seen in the plan before. We're proposing $1.4 million in fiscal year 26 for ball field construction at the former transmitter site. We have some additional funding programmed in fiscal year 30 and the out years to implement improvements outlined in the master plan. East Suffolk Athletic Fields, 600,000 in fiscal year 26, and that's to establish a multipurpose field and walking trail or path at the former Suffolk Public Schools Maintenance Facility adjacent to the East Suffolk Recreation Center. Water access to the Nansman River. This is the site formerly known as the Brady's Marina Site. The city has acquired. We've proposed $3.2 million in fiscal year 26 for design, site development, and construction of the roadway parking lot and the boat ramps. This has been paired with some funding that was approved last year, and then we have in here an additional 100,000 in fiscal year 28 for park, planning park amenities in the upland area of that property. Previous funding was 1.9 million for that project. The Holly Lawn Cemetery Improvements, this is another project that's been in the plan and moving forward. We're showing 286,000 over fiscal year 26 and 27 to replace storm drainage and extend the roadways to open the final section of the cemetery. This is a combination of cemetery funds and general fund dollars. Other projects of note, the Sleepy Hole Park renovation, $1.2 million in fiscal year 30 to build a dog park, an outdoor basketball court at Sleepy Hole Park. We have an aquatic facility, $360,000 to begin design of the aquatic facility in fiscal year 30. Downtown Recreation Center, 204,000 programmed to conduct a feasibility study in fiscal year 27 for a recreation center in the core downtown area, 960,000 in fiscal year 30 to begin actual design. Great Desable Swamp Park, $1.1 million in fiscal year 27 to establish a park near the entrance to the Great Desable Swamp. About $900,000 of that is anticipated in grant funds. Lake Mead Park Improvements, 1.3 million in fiscal year 30, and that's to install a prefabricated building for the parks and athletic staff that are currently using a trailer at that site that's outlived its useful life. JFK Field Lighting, along with the JFK Middle School Project, the city is required to install lighting on the fields. It's $1.1 million in fiscal year 27 for the lighting and to build the concession and restroom areas for this new facility. Gateway Beautification, $75,000 a year to dress up and beautify the corridors coming into the city. Holy Neck Recreation Center/Park, $210,000 in fiscal year 28 to get a feasibility study underway for a recreation center or park in the Holy Neck area. And then lastly, Jericho Park, $545,000 over fiscal years 29 and 30. It's to establish a, there's a need for a park in the Jericho area along the lines of outdoor playground area, possibly some kind of walking path and maybe a basketball court. Public Buildings and Facilities, public building capital maintenance, we're showing $9.6 million over the first five years, and this is to renovate, repair, and make our facilities ADA compliant. We're showing $3.4 million in the fiscal year 26, including funds to replace HVAC units at North Suffolk Public Library and to renovate space here in City Hall to address staff spacing needs. As the city has grown, we've added staff, and we have space in the building that needs to be refinished to allow for more staffing. Access Road at the Joint Operations Training Complex on Carolina Road, this project's been in the plan before. It's a continuation of that, $1 million for stormwater management requirements and increased construction costs of the access road, which will serve the fire training, burn building, and other city operations plan for the Carolina Road Complex. The Virginia Pilot Building renovations, the Economic Development Authority acquired this facility last year. We're proposing $1 million in fiscal year 26 to renovate space in this building to serve the purpose of addressing space needs at the Godwin Courthouse. There's some components of offices over there that could move across the street, as well as provide supplemental space for city department uses. The Homeless Shelter renovations, the city acquired the Regal Inn, former Regal Inn motel last year. We're proposing $950,000 to assist with those renovations to transform or reuse that site into a homeless shelter, and this will supplement HUD grant funds that were used to acquire the property and are currently being used for renovations. Other projects under Public Buildings and Facilities, Airport Master Plan Update in fiscal year 27 to study the future facility requirements at the airport. A feasibility study for a downtown parking garage in fiscal year 27, $2 million in fiscal year 30 for interior improvements at the Courts Building. The Morgan Library Reuse Renovation, this is a new project this year. Once the new library is completed later next year, the old facility will be open, and the plan there is to renovate that for city office and space needs. And then the North Suffolk Library Interior Upgrades, 1.9 million in fiscal year 30. It's to upgrade the flooring, furniture, and indoor and outdoor spaces at this facility, which is nearly 20 years old now. In the area of public safety, we have the fire apparatus replacements at 19.1 million dollars over the first five years, and that's to replace fire engines, tankers, rescue trucks, aerial ladder, and platform trucks that have exceeded their useful lives. Fiscal year 26, we have allocated 2.8 million to replace two fire engines. Ambulance replacements, similar to fire apparatus, 6.8 million over the first five years. This is to replace ambulances that have exceeded their life. Two ambulance replacements are planned each year of the plan. Ambulance new stations, anytime we're adding a medic unit or adding a new station, we have to purchase ambulance for those, so we're showing 610,000 in fiscal year 26 to purchase a new ambulance for the Station 4 Lake Kilby. Station, which is being replaced and will include the addition of a medic unit to serve that area. It's currently unserved by medic at that facility. Station 4 Replacement at Lake Kilby, construction, designing construction of that facility, we have 3.5 million in fiscal year 26 and 9.5 million in fiscal year 27. The cost of this project has increased due to inflation in the construction market, and this will replace the undersized facility, which currently serves that area. Station 9 Upgrades at King's Highway, this was a facility that formerly served as a volunteer station. The city acquired that a few years ago. It's in need of some upgrades to the dormitories, to the building, electrical, mechanical systems, furniture, things of that nature, so 1.4 million in fiscal year 27. And then along those same lines, Station 10 on Bennetts Pasture, 2.5 million to modernize that facility, which has some age on it. Also in public safety, breathing air system replacement, $100,000 for the breathing air system at Station 3 at White Marsh, self-contained breathing apparatus at 2.2 million in fiscal year 28. Those SCBA's worn by the firefighters have to be replaced about every 10 years. And then a police training center at Whaleyville, this is a continuation of previous year funding, $1 million to, for site improvements at the former Whaleyville Community Center for reuse as a police training center and outdoor uses at K-9 area, training area. In transportation, we have a number of projects in this service area. The Godwin Boulevard Improvements is 1.25 million in FY '26 and '27. This will match 8.6 million in state and federal funding already to receive for the widening of that 1.5 mile span of Godwin Boulevard from King's Fork Road to the Suffolk Bypass. We have the Route 17 road widening, again, $3 million in local funds to match 9.8 million in grant funds received for the project. This is to widen and extend the travel lanes in both directions and add and improve turn lanes, replace signals, and add a bike accommodations from just west of Winward Lane on Route 17 there to Harborview Boulevard. And then the Shoulders Hill Phase 2 and 3 widening projects, 22.6 million over fiscal year 26 to '28. It's a combination of state and local funds to widen the section of the road between, pretty much between Bridge Road and Pewsville Road to a four-lane divided Route 17, Crenston Road Intersection, $2 million in federal funding is anticipated to go along with existing funds on that project. The Diverging Diamond Interchange at Godwin, 1.75 million in local money to match 12.9 million in state and federal funds, and this project will convert the interchange from its current design to a diverging diamond interchange. East Constance Road at Willroy Road Intersection, we have funds in fiscal year 27 and 28 to build the right turn lane at Willroy Road onto East Constance Road, and this is a combination of federal and local money. And then the Willroy Road Progress Intersection, 700,000 in fiscal year 27, 1.8 million in fiscal year 28 for turn lane and signal upgrades. Again, a combination of federal and local funds. Also in transportation, we have Nansman Parkway at Bennetts Pasture Road Intersection. This project is already under construction. We need a little, about $200,000 in additional local funding to finish out this project. Shoulders Hill Road and Route 17 intersection, this one also under construction currently. We're anticipating additional federal funds and some local funds to complete the intersection and turn lane improvements. Channel dredging and waterway navigation, we program 1.2 million in fiscal year 28. This is to dredge Bennetts Creek in future years of the plan. It's for Bennetts Creek as well as the channel going into the Brady's Marina Site. Rail crossing improvements, $95,000. This project's been moving forward the last three years to update panel sections to improve ride quality over railroad crossings. Miscellaneous roadway improvements, this is $200,000 in local funds to connect missing sidewalk segments, replace wooden curb cuts, and make decorative enhancements. These are projects that our road maintenance funds are not eligible to serve. The relocation of the Zone C, Public Works Zone C Headquarters in fiscal year 29 and 30, relocating it from its current location at Lone Star Lakes. The Route 58 improvements, Long Street to Holland Bypass, this is the second year of funding for this project, 507,000 for improvements between Route 58, Long Street Lane, and the Holland Bypass. We have a signal, citywide signal system upgrade for upgrading the traffic signals throughout the city, and we've got a placeholder in here for electric car charging stations project should federal funding become available. Town Point Road Sidewalk, this is the second year of funding programmed, 1.1 million to install sidewalks along the section of Town Point Road in Pewsville. We have two connector studies, one for the North Suffolk Connector, as well as the Carolina Road Connector, in hopes of that facilitating or hopefully attracting some grant funds in future years. And then the Route 460 Improvements Project, 32.2 million in fiscal year 26. This is, this project is to widen the road, construct, construction in the median sidewalks and closed drainage systems between King's Fork Road and the bypass. 30.1 million of that has been awarded from the state of Virginia, and there's a 2.1 million developer contribution for that project as well. We're also showing 77.9 million in fiscal year 30, and that's in state funds for construction. The King's Highway Bridge, we have 3.8 million in fiscal year 26 for, to get design underway. $3 million of that is federal funding that's already been awarded to the city. An Amtrak Study- An Amtrak study, ridership and revenue study to determine the need for an Amtrak station stop in the city. It's in fiscal year 26. The Bridge Road, College Drive left turn lane, 2.4 million in fiscal year 27 and 9.3 in fiscal year 29 to add a southbound turn lane and modification to the traffic signal. And we're anticipating 100% federal funding for this project. The Suburban Drive sidewalk to provide a connection from the existing Portsmouth Boulevard sidewalk that terminates at the intersection with Suburban Drive. And then lastly, we have the Plumber Boulevard extension in fiscal year 26 to extend Plumber Boulevard from the existing roundabout to Town Point Road. The Willroy Road widening, preliminary design to study the widening of Willroy from the base of the Route 58 ramp extending northeast to Nansman, the Nansman Willroy Flyover. The Route 58 ITS sensors project, it was a federal funding anticipated for equipment, conduit, cameras and variable message boards to improve traffic flow and safety on Route 58. Citywide guardrail project, 375,000 anticipating state funds, and this is for replacing guardrail or adding new guardrail at various sections throughout the city. And then the Harborview Boulevard pedestrian improvements, 350,000 dollars in Route 17 taxing district funds. And this is to modify and enhance the ADA curb ramps, install audible pedestrian signals, crosswalk updates and sidewalk connections. In the area of public schools, schools major repairs and systems replacements, $5 million per year, beginning in fiscal year 28 for repair and replacement of heating and cooling systems, roofs, stormwater drainage infrastructure and hazardous materials testing and abatement. The Northern Shores Elementary School project, this is the second year of funding programmed in fiscal year 26 at 11.1 million and 3.2 in fiscal year 27 to design and construct the additional two-story wing, restrooms and cafeteria expansion at Northern Shores. This will enhance student capacity and eliminate mobile units. Elephant's Fork Elementary School, 61.1 million, beginning in fiscal year 27 through fiscal year 29. It's to build a new 800-student replacement school. The current facility is over 40 years old. And then lastly, Schools Administration Office, 6 million dollars over fiscal years 26 and 27 to address the space needs of the Schools Administration. They're currently leasing space in the Professional Building in downtown Suffolk. In the area of Village and Neighborhood Initiatives, we're continuing with 1.4 million dollars a year to provide closed drainage and street improvements in the Lloyd Place and Rosemont neighborhoods, as well as funding for future projects to be determined through Neighborhood Needs Assessments. $250,000 for a year for open space improvements, for property acquisition and acquisition of, or property acquisition and neighborhood parks and other quality of life enhancements. And then the Downtown Implementation Plan Initiatives, 9.6 million over the five-year period to make streetscape improvements, public art and mural projects, interior and exterior improvements to the Phoenix, Phoenix Bank Building and Block, SunTrust Bank redevelopment, wayfinding, gateway improvements in property acquisition. Public utilities, so separate fund, planned expenditures at 101.7 million dollars, supported by 56 million dollars in revenue bonds and 45.7 million dollars in utilities, cash funding. The projects in public utilities include water source development and water treatment plant expansion. It's 41.8 million dollars over the first five years. The big project there is the surface water treatment plant expansion. We also have the groundwater permit renewal, EDR well evaluation, the REEDS very well rehabilitation and water source development charges. Water distribution and transmission system expansion, 11.6 million dollars for the Southern Transmission Main Project to include design of Route 10 to Moore's Farm Lane and Exeter Drive slash Lake Prince Drive and construction of Moore Farm to Exeter. Water system upgrades, 28.7 million dollars over the first five years. This is to replace aging water meters, water service lines and to address lead service lines, which are under a new regulatory requirement, find and fix repairs. Projects are slated for Cedar Hills, Cedar Lakes. The downtown water improvements, Lakeside Phase Two, Mahan and Day Street and Adams, Maple and Mulberry area. On the sewer side of public utilities, 900,000 over the first five years to extend sanitary sewer into existing developed areas that are currently without sewer service. And then sanitary sewer system upgrades, 18.7 million. This is for the management operations and maintenance program to protect against overflows, find and fix repairs, and then pump, pump station, electrical and mechanical upgrades and other neighborhood sewer improvements. In the area of stormwater, 17.3 million dollars in projects planned over the first five years, supported by 11.2 million in revenue bonds, 5.5 million dollars in stormwater fund cash, and then a developer contribution of 627,000. Projects include the citywide drainage improvements at 500,000 dollars a year to address nuisance flooding in certain areas of the city. Murphy's Mill culvert improvements, this is a new project at 1.9 million dollars to replace the culvert at the crossing from Murphy's Mill Pond to Lake Mead. And this project is partially funded by developer contribution. Oakland Drainage Improvements at 5.2 million dollars, program from fiscal year 26 to 29, designed right of way in construction to address flooding in the Oakland area. Phase one will include improvements on Pembroke Lane to Old Chuckettuck Road. This is separate from the ARPA-funded project that you've, you've heard about, that's ongoing. Downtown Infrastructure Improvements, this is 100,000 dollars per year for drainage improvements to reduce flooding specific to the downtown area. Whaleyville Drainage Improvements, 1.75 million to address flooding issues in the Whaleyville area, 750,000 for, to address flooding issues in the Holland area. And then 1.5 million over fiscal year 27 through 29 for the Woodrow South Suffolk Drainage We also have Wilkins Drive Drainage at 250,000 in fiscal year 27 to address flooding in the Holland Road area. Old Town Drainage Improvements, 2 million dollars in fiscal year 30 is to relocate stormwater infrastructure and provide greater capacity and improve maintenance access. And Jefferson Street Drainage at 500,000 dollars in fiscal year 26 and another 500,000 in fiscal year 28 to upgrade and relocate the drainage infrastructure on Jefferson Street. We have a new project this year in the area of refuse, 3 million dollars planned expenditure supported by general obligation bonds. It's a new, moving the current sanitation facility from Pine Street down the street here in the downtown area to the operations complex out off of Carolina Road. And so 3 million dollars in fiscal year 30 to begin design of that facility. We've got construction funding showing in the out years. We have two projects in the transit area, 5.1 million dollars. This is all state and federal funding. College Drive Bus Pullout, 871,000 to build a turnout lane along College Drive near the Kroger, as well as a bus shelter, signage and a traffic signal. And then the traffic, our Transit Operations Facility, another project that's been in here before, 4.2 million dollars in federal funding to construct a, an operations facility at the Carolina Road Complex for our transit buses and operations. Fleet Fund, we have the replacement fleet facility at nearly 4.2 million dollars, supported by general obligation bonds. The current facility out off of Kenyon Road, the city has outgrown that. We share space there with Suffolk Public Schools and the plan is to begin design of a new facility in fiscal year 30, I believe, and then construction in the out years. To wrap up, just a reminder, the document is a plan, not a budget, even though we, we speak about funding. Projects can move forward and shift out from year to year depending on timing and needs. It's updated annually through a comprehensive process intended to identify needs and guide budget recommendations. A public hearing is held prior to City Council adoption at the second meeting in February, and the first year is proposed in the budget. The next steps, we'll be bringing a shorter presentation back before you at your January meeting. We'll take any comments or recommendations that you have and would ask for your adoption at that meeting, and then we'll move it forward to City Council. With that, I will try and answer any questions that you may have. I also have department heads with me as well who can provide project specifics. Thank you.
Questions? Questions? I'll look to my left first, to my right.
Yeah, question. Can we go back to the first slide? Not that first. Keep on going to where it's the local and combined funding.
This one here.
Keep on going. It's, it's the main one that you had, next one. You had like, yep, this one?
Right here.
Go back.
This is the...
That's everything. That's state, federal and local. And then go with the next one.
The next one is just local funding.
Thank you. That's all I wanted to see. I appreciate it.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman. Well, since Johnny didn't take up any time, I guess that gives me a little bit of leeway here. First of all, Commissioner Goodwin and I were on the CIP Subcommittee, and I'd like to thank the, all the city staff members and the amount of time that you guys put into this thing is phenomenal. That being said, as you will remember when I was there, I did question the process that we were going through. And it was somewhat of a, of a recap of Commissioner Hicks' comments from last year, where she, and I'm gonna paraphrase, she basically said that she wasn't getting, given any information prior to the meeting, and so therefore it's difficult to prepare for a meeting when you don't have any preliminary information. This year, I called the city. Prior to the meeting, we met on a Monday morning. I think we met for five, six hours. Everything was fantastic and the knowledge that our city staff have in all this. But I thought something was missing and, but I called to ask if there was a chance on a prior year that I served on this, we were given probably something like the plan prior to the meeting, so you could go through, you could underline, you could do, just like we do for a planning commission meeting, where you can point out things that you have interest. When you're looking at 134-page document and it's given to you and bam, 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 you go through, there's really not a lot of opportunity for any thought on to any of the individual items. And since that meeting, and this was what we got basically, which was the agenda for the meeting that was handed out, you know, as we came to the meeting. So there was nothing we could take with us to kind of go over between that meeting and this meeting, where we are representatives, I presume, of this, of this group. I look at us as being citizens, and, and this is just for some thought process going forward. When we were looking at the process for this to go through, it's presented, it goes to us, all of the information there is provided by city staff. We are the first, I guess, at the CIP Subcommittee meeting, we are the first time that the citizens, a citizen of the city that's not a city staff member, is exposed to all of this information. And so they're, the only time that there is citizen impact or input other than from this body and from the city council is at the public hearing that's done before city council approves that. And this looks like if we're spending this amount of money for the city, that there ought to be some opportunity for additional citizen impact. And maybe, I guess what I'm asking is, I, I think it would be good for the city to look at this process. I don't know the last time it was looked at. I know in past years, the CIP Committee was given additional information prior to that meeting. Don't know what the problem would be with giving that information out, but it would be certainly helpful to those of us that, that sit on the planning commission. I think it would enable us, maybe even between the CIP Subcommittee meeting and this meeting, for us to bring up some points of discussion with this, looking at it not from the city's standpoint or from the city staff standpoint, but from a body that's been appointed by council to maybe add some things. And I know in the past, we've made some recommendations for some changes to, to this. But I, I would recommend strongly that the city look at the process on the capital improvement plan. I just don't think it gets enough opportunity for citizen input. I sure like to prepare for a meeting before I go to it, and, and it's difficult to prepare for a meeting when you have no idea what's gonna be said at the meeting. So that, that's all I'll say. It looks good. I, I tell you from, from the standpoint of listening to what we've got, whole lot of moving parts in the city, but I just, I just think we ought to look at this process on the capital improvement plan. I'm not sure that I'm 100% behind the whole process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks.
Thank you, and I'll certainly...
See you next month.
We'll do that. I'll take those comments back and we'll see what we can do to improve the process.
Well, I do, I have something, and it was kind of, I felt like it was kind of glossed over, but how does this match up with the comprehensive plan? I know there's been some issues back and forth, particularly with the city council about the comp plan for, for 2045. But there is supposed to be a linkage between the two every year, you know, as to how the CIP supports that comp plan. I think a lot of people don't quite understand that process either, and I don't know how that can be improved, but maybe focus a little bit more on how this does link with that every year, because we go through this every year, you know, the CIP anyway. But I think that would be beneficial.
Thank you.
Status reporter of the city council meeting of November 20th.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Wine had to step out. So at the November 20th city council meeting, there were two items that were considered. First, there was conditional use permit, CUP 2024-006, SCARP Solar, to grant a conditional use permit to establish a solar energy facility, a property located at White Marsh Road, zoning map 35, parcels 172, 172A, 172B, and zoning map 45, parcel 49D. That item was tabled until the December 18th city council meeting, which is tomorrow. And then the second item was the City of Suffolk Comprehensive Plan Update submitted by the City of Suffolk Planning Department on behalf of the City of Suffolk Planning Commission. Consideration shall be given to, for recommendation and adoption of the City of Suffolk Comprehensive Plan Update, Suffolk 2045, as submitted by the Department of Planning and Community Development. That item was also tabled to the December 18th city council meeting, which again is tomorrow, so tomorrow will be interesting. And that was all we have.
We had no preliminary plats. Commissioner comments? I'm gonna start down this end.
Merry Christmas.
I'm gonna be long today. So you just, yeah, I'm gonna be long today. First of all, I want to thank Commissioner Hicks for the annual Christmas cookies we always have. This is year 50 for the City of Suffolk, and I'm very proud to be a Suffolkian, and I think this has been a wonderful year. I just want to take a moment, because I went to a lot of the celebrations and I looked at a lot of the videos online celebrating the 50 years. But I want to, first of all, I want to congratulate and thank former mayor Lynda Johnson. I think it's a great moment in our city that we elected a woman to represent our city. I think it was a great step forward. And I'm very proud of her, and I'm proud of B. Rogers for her service to the City of Suffolk and upcoming that we have Ebony Wright. I want to thank Commissioner Hicks and Commissioner Bowles for their additions that they have made to the planning commission. Also, you know, it's something I was waiting on, the whole 50-year celebration. But I want to say this before I get to that. I want to thank Mr. Benton, who served for a long time on our planning commission. And I want to thank our chairman, Chairman Singleton, for his leadership and what he's done for the City of Suffolk. Lastly, it's one group of citizens that I don't think received their proper due in this 50-year celebration. Suffolk has been a city for 50 years, and we've only had nine African-Americans to ever serve on city council. And I think it would be remiss if we didn't take a moment to thank those nine individuals, because, you know, I told Mayor John Mazzio and passes, you can't talk about Suffolk and the merger in 50 years, and you don't talk about Moses Riddick. I don't think you can do it, and I don't think Moses Riddick really deserved, really received his flowers from our city in this 50 years. And I want to thank Moses Riddick for what he gave up, not even what he gave to the city, what the man gave up in his own personal life to make Suffolk equitable for everyone. It's a blessing that we still have Enoch Copeland in our midst, and we still have Ronald Hart in our midst, and we still have John Mazzio in our midst. He was the first African-American mayor of our city. I want to thank Charles Brown for his dedication and what he gave for the city, as well as current councilman Leroy Bennett. I want to thank current vice mayor Lou Ward, and I want to thank current councilman, my councilman, Leodis Williams, for their service, and I wish the best to Ms. Ebony Wright as she starts her endeavor. And I just wanted to say that in the midst of 50 years, that I think it should have been something in a way to thank them for their service. And I, yeah, my time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Wa.
I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and also Anita for her annual gift to us. They're very good, by the way. And also the little Christmas tree ornament that was provided to us. And also, they're all gone now, but I do appreciate the support that the staff has given us for this year and in previous years, because otherwise, you know, we would have, as we talked about a little bit before, you know, before our event today. But we couldn't exist without their hard work, and they're here every day, and we're only here once a month. So we depend heavily on them, and so that's, so just pass that along if you would, to them, because we all appreciate it. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
I'd like to pretty much echo what I've said the last couple of years about this time, about reminding everyone to go out to Sleepy Hole Park to see the lights. That'll put you in the Christmas mode. Anyway, with that being said, I hope everybody has a wonderful holiday and be safe, and can't wait to see you guys in January.
Mr. Chairman.
Say happy holidays, Merry Christmas to you all, and I want to thank the planning, you got, you took my little piece. The planning department has worked so diligently over the last few years. You guys, I guess people don't take, we take it for granted. We get these nice packages, these serious, seriously nice packages, guys. These are some in-depth packages that we get every month. They have spent time daily, all day sometimes, half the night, trying to get us a package together, and we beat them up like it took them five minutes, and they still smile. They are still happy to see us the next month, and I just, I just think that, that we ought to say, thank you, planning department, in your absence, you guys have gone. Yes, please, carry that to them.
They will watch. I'll have them watch the video back.
And we'll try not to beat so hard next year.
Anita, thank you for brightening up our day today with your outfit. I know Christmas is coming so much faster than we are ready for it this year, seems like. But I'd like to wish each and every one of you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And just a side note real quick, I was one of the initial members of the training class for Suffolk Youth Athletic Association as a soccer referee. And spent probably about 10 years when my kids were there, running up and down those soccer fields. So even an old guy like me can go back to when that was being founded, and it started off, actually Bob Gillette started that thing with cooperation from the city, because there was no soccer program offered in the City of Suffolk, and it had to be in the 70s probably. And the city bought us, I think, five soccer balls, and that, and we started meeting at Wellens Park. And that was the start of Suffolk Youth Athletic Association. And then it kind of took off and the interest grew, so it's been around for a long time, and it's really helped out a whole bunch of citizens and kids in our city, so that's just a little bit of history.
Chairman, before you say, I left out one name, and I can see him coming into my driveway yelling and screaming. I left out Curtis Mirti, and I need to make sure that I, all of Curtis Mirti, he would go, "Young man, you left me out in your speech." I can hear him. I can hear him, but I want to thank, long, thank Curtis Mirti for his...
Glad you added that, because he'd probably been in your driveway when you got home.
And there's one person you left out also, the Hellebuy Hollen, Judge Hollen. Congratulate her on her latest elevation, and Commissioner Hicks, thanks for the cookies. And when you were coming in the door, I had just finished thanking the staff before we had our earlier lunch this afternoon. And I even added a comment that we get on our soap boxes, and we think we know everything, and they have done all the work already, okay? And along that note, we elect city councils to run this city. We don't need to now get in their pockets as inputs on every issue coming down the pike, CIP especially, and the comp plan. We spent more time on this comp plan this year than we did on every comp plan we have had since 2000. And that's because of the public input. You elect officials to be your spokesperson. Let them be your spokesperson, and not you try to take that spokesperson mouth back from them and get your two cents in. And Merry Christmas.